Turn on your mics. I'm not trying to be rude, but we need to be mindful of the public's time, so this meeting is now called to order. Roll call whenever you're ready.
Ring.
Here.
Johnson. Harper.
Here.
Clement.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Dealey.
Here.
Wumpf.
Yes.
All right, first item on the agenda is to approve the meeting minutes from the last meeting.
Move approval.
Okay, all those in favor?
I'll second that.
Oh, sorry, second. Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Are there any items to be added to the agenda other than the updated agenda that we received in the email? Okay, hearing none, could we have a motion to approve the updated agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Let's, I think we should state what was updated-
Oh, sure, sure.
-so the audience knows. All right, at 7:35, two administrative items, it was Doug Zimmer, is it Zimmermer? What, how do you say it?
Zimmerer.
And, um, a Pecos, and there's some administrative items followed, and then 7:40 is going to be discussion of zoning ordinance changes.
Okay, so, all those in favor of approving the amended agenda? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried, carried. Do we have any conflict of interest declarations on today's agenda?
No.
No.
No. Okay, hearing none. The first item on the agenda is Doug Markwart, rezone and conditional use. Applicant is requesting a rezone from rural transitional district to a commercial district, and is also requesting a conditional use permit for a truck or equipment terminal. Said property is legally described as Lot 1 in the north 100 feet, Lot 2 and Joe Dean's addition, Section 24, T-94 North, Range 56 West, hereafter referred to as Utica North Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. And then, if you could state your name for the record, please.
Doug Markwart.
Thank you. Okay, so, do we have any questions for Doug?
Not necessarily, I think it's kind of in our court, I guess.
To your knowledge, I have a question, are any of your immediate neighbors, like the, um, the gas station, interested in getting a rezone as well? That was one thing we discussed last month, and you weren't here, so if we could just bounce that off you in case you know something.
Yep, and I don't, uh, we bounced that off of the fuel stop to the north, and also the sailbarn folks, and got no feedback after-
Oh, I see.
... two phone calls.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ralph, Ralph's property to the north, and he said he would be interested, uh, if that was possible, but you can't leapfrog him, I don't think so.
Okay. Well, I think it's a logical step forward to make it a commercial zoning, that's my opinion. It's being used as commercial property, it's been used for commercial property for some time.
Yeah, I think our last discussion kind of ended with, do we zone that, or do we look at the entire-
Area.
-RT, which I think needs to happen, um, I don't know that the Markwarts need to wait for us to decide what we're going to do with the rest of that.
Well, that's why I thought I would just ask you, if you already knew neighbors were interested in it, then we could, you know, do a big chunk.
And I would be glad to reach out again, and try to kick that off center again, but, but, uh, without any kind of feedback.
And that's not, I mean, that's not exactly your responsibility, I just thought since you were here and you-
No, but it's right in the do. So, I mean, if we're going to do a big, try to do a big chunk, then I might as well get, try to get it done.
Are there any more questions from the board before I ask for public input? We discussed your case at length, but there were, that we wanted to ask you when you were here last time, and so, um, believe it or not, there was a lot of discussion on this topic. So, um, do you have any questions for us before I ask for the public?
I don't.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this issue? What we're discussing at this point is a rezone from rural transitional to a commercial district for the, um, Markwart trucking property. You can come up and state your name for the record.
Chris Nelson, I just live in the south, and I guess I don't have any problems with rezoning, but, uh, I'm kind of representing a lot of the residents around that area, that we've got a lot of Jake activity out there, and if we're going to increase the business out there, which, you know, hopefully will increase, um, business and traffic out there, and we just need to have a little respect for the residents that are around the area, maybe we could put some Jake restrictions around, around the area, because sometimes it gets pretty bad. And, uh, so I think, just in, uh, you know, like I said, I'm kind of representing some, representing some of the residents that live around there, and, uh, that was the biggest concern, so.
True.
Okay?
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue? Okay, hearing none, um, the time for public discussion is now closed.
I'd have a question for Mr. Markwart.
Sure.
May I ask you a question, sir? Um, for your lagoon, is that, is that DNR permitted, or what's, what's the story? It's, it's just, is that just for your, uh, the facility there, is that for a truck wash, too? What's, what's the story with your lagoon system?
Uh, the lagoon was, there was a file number 12194, up at, up here at DNR, I guess.
So, is it D, is DNR expected, or is it built to DNR standards?
It's built to DNR standards, uh, McLower, McKim, Kim, McLowery Engineering from Elpoint is the one that engineered it in 2012.
If you look at the packet, that documentation of those site plans and things is in there, and then the DNR did confirm that they did a surface water approval for that, for that lagoon expansion at that time in 2012.
Does it permitted, do you know, and like, I have an NPDES permit or anything like that, or you-
Are you anticipating putting in a truck wash?
Um, I would say that I'm open to expanding any business, and the agricultural economy in the area is not e-bopping as it was, and, uh, I wouldn't say a truck wash, but with the trailers, with the current customer base, we have a need to wash out our trailers, uh, on, uh, more often, and the nearest truck wash is going to be Vermillion or Wagner. We've got a lot of refrigerated units, and, uh, the health of the food, the food requirements for loading those trailers is becoming more and more strict, which makes sense.
Just to be- To be clear, the CUP mentioned on the application, that's for current operation, correct?
Pardon me?
The CUP that's requested on the current application, um, that's for, for your current operation, as it stands today, correct?
Yeah.
So, is there certification that goes along with being a food-grade washout, or, I was just kind of curious about that, no? They just, they, the truck or trailer just has to pass inspection once it gets to wherever it's being, going to be loaded?
Yeah.
Is that, that's how it usually works? Okay. All righty. Any other questions?
Question for Gary. Timing of this, how do you see this? If we were to go forward with just this parcel, or these two parcels, with the environment we're in, how do we see this happening?
Well, I think that's the big discussion that needs to be had yet, but I don't think you want to wait on, on this one particular item, you've already, it's been months, I think even before I started, so I would assume we'd want to move forward on this item, and then have the discussion on where we want to go long-term with, with the RT. I mean, like, like Mr. Markwart mentioned, are we going to try and tackle it and do bunches at a time? Is the, is the county going to, you know, take, basically take it and decide to change it all at one shot, notify all the neighbors, this is the plan, come up with a plan of which ones we should want to be commercials, which ones we want to be residential, and, um, and move forward on some of those things, if, if that's the thought process. I mean, I can tell you, just from, since I've been here, that the RT causes major issues with everybody that's trying to do anything. We have a, a couple currently from California that wants to buy some land and put a residence on it, and, and, you know, they got to get a conditional use just to do that, and, and it just, the unknowing of what people can do and cannot do, and you'll hear a couple other people coming in later tonight, that just everything's being questioned right now, even as far as, um, you know, what can be done in these districts, and they're, they're concerned about spending money, and then getting, going through the process and getting a denial, you know, for some of these things, which I totally understand. I mean, we're, if I was putting down a thousand dollars, and for a plat, and for a variance, I'd be concerned, too, and, and I think you're going to find that more and more people are going to want to ask that question of the planning commission and the board of adjustment upfront, before they spend that kind of money, and, and so, as we go through these issues and go through some of these ordinance amendments, we'll definitely want to keep all that in mind.
Concerning our, uh, proposed changes or adoption of the ordinance that we're at, how would we run this change? You couldn't really run it in parallel, we'd have to wait for that to be, come through and be adopted, and then make the next change.
Right, right, exactly.
Okay.
And so, that would be the start of the process tonight that we're looking to do, and, and, uh, but we got to make sure it gets through the entire process before that can move forward, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, one concern I have is looking at these design specs of this lagoon, if you do, do like some sort of truck wash, I mean, this is only considering, you know, 1,600 gallons a day, if you do start doing a lot of trailer washes, I mean, you could easily exceed, you know, the design capabilities for, for this particular, you know, setup, so, I mean, is you plan to come back and, and ask for a permit for conditional use, for a truck wash, I mean, or, because I don't see that even as a conditional use. I know we're talking about rezone now, but is that a permitted use, and do you know, Gary, in, in commercial, or not? Because the last thing we want to have is, you know, you have problems and the neighbors have problems, so I think this is something we need to look at now, but, um, 1,600 gallons a day is not, not very much. I'm sure it was fine for what it was originally intended, but if you're going to do something different, you know, now's the time to consider those.
But I think if you were going to come in for a truck wash, you would have to come in and reapply completely.
Yeah, that's fine.
For a CUP, and, and the whole building permit and everything for that.
Well, I don't see a CUP in sections, sorry, in page 75, or-
It's not called out specifically.
Or 25, or-
Conditional use or anything for a truck wash, I think it's what Dan has said.
Yeah, so, and that's kind of what he had mentioned, that is part of the reason he'd like to do, and I don't, I don't know, you probably know more about this than I do, Zane, but for a truck, 1,600 gallons a day, that's not very much, um, if you're washing a bunch of trailers. So, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine approving the rezone, but I, I would, I think we should put some stipulation on that, if there's a truck wash or something, that he needs to come back to us, I would be fine with that.
And the truck wash of over how many trucks, uh, how many trailers, I should say? And it's a public truck wash versus my own equipment thing right now?
Yeah, I, I think, I think your, your own stuff, but if you're washing 50 trailers a day, that, to me, that's different. You've got a lot of trucks, Doug, so I don't know, how, how many do you think you'd be washing a day of your own versus if you opened the setup?
What water source are you using?
Uh, we have a well out there.
A well? Because I was going to say, if you're BY, you're not going to be using 1,600 gallons a day.
And I, I don't know what the actual numbers are, but, but I'm not, we're not a Blue Beacon.
Sure.
I mean, we've got, uh, our biggest customer is ag-related, and they're, you know, it's biosecurity, animal, you know, and it's, but it's, uh-
Sure.
But it's, we're not a Blue Beacon, and there's not going to be a 24-hour sign out there, or something like that, and trucks lined up going to a local facility. And I'd be glad, if I reach X level, I, I mean, if some, I've got, oh, there's been farmers in the past that have called and said, hey, can you wash out my trailer, for whatever reason, whatever, but if, if, uh, there's a number or something that I need to wash, or 1,600 gallons a day, I've only got 25 people in the office, and that's not, that's not, there's not that much washing going on.
You're on a well, though, so you don't have, you don't have a monthly idea of how many gallons, because you're on a well, I'm assuming, so.
Correct, I'm sure I can get, uh, some numbers, though.
Sure.
Uh, my brother runs a truck, truck wash in Sioux Falls, about how many gallons that takes per, per trailer.
I don't think anybody here has a good idea what kind of gallonage we're talking about, so.
Okay, any other questions?
One thing I think is a point we should look at, is right now, the conditional use is for a truck maintenance facility, so what do you, what defines truck maintenance, right? And, uh, and obviously, right now, it's here on the aspect of conditional use permit for existing conditions we have, but I think if you went forward, and in, in, in part of truck maintenance, truck washing is part of truck maintenance or vehicle maintenance, so then, where do we have it in Arizona that defines, uh, truck wash resorts, how many gallons, or?
Well, that's the difference between-
But that's something for later day.
What, right, what he said.
I mean, we can't have a book with every possible thing that Yankton County could do, we would, I mean, we wouldn't even be able to carry it around.
No.
Sometimes you have to kind of go, you know-
And, and it's just like-
Business.
Right, like we were, like, we were just saying.
Ag-related business.
If he's, if he's washing out his own trailers, that's a part of maintenance, that's a part of his own operation. If he puts up a major truck wash facility where people come in and, and there's more public use than your own use, then I'd say that's a different aspect of your business, that's like a sideline of the same business. You follow me?
You know what, I, I'm not trying to circumvent anything, I just want to keep moving forward.
Well, sure.
And if, and if I could keep track, you know, I could keep track for a month and count, count who's all coming in, or something like that, I mean, I'm, I'm very open on moving things forward.
I think you look at what's presented today, and for something in the future, then you adjust it as a different condition.
Right, and if you're going to build something new, then you would come in for a building permit, yeah. Right. Okay, so, if we don't have any more questions? Dan, did you have anything else you wanted to address, or anyone else on the board? Then I would entertain a motion, and I believe we would have to do this in two motions, one for the rezone and one for the conditional use, would we not?
I would think a rezone would have to be done and approved before we can approve a conditional use.
Oh, okay, yes.
Probably have to go through Section 1809. Uh, Mr. Markwart, per, uh, some of the neighbors' complaints, is there something that you could recommend that would alleviate, I know they don't like Jake breaking, is there something that you could, is there anything that's, that you are able to do, or, I know it's not, mostly not your trucks, but your own individual drivers, you could maybe mention?
If I've got 65 to 70 trucks on the road, I would say most days I've got less than five, and there's, uh, probably a couple grain trucks coming in that are my family's, and, uh, I, a lot of them going in the truck stop, I, I, I see those guys, I hear those guys, or the livestock facility behind there.
Sure.
Common courtesy is certainly one thing, but, I mean, I don't have, I don't have a lot, I don't have as much traffic as the guy that comes coming out.
Sure, okay.
Usually we can work on those kind of things with the highway department and get some signage and stuff up if, if it's necessary.
And, and we try to be a good neighbor, you always got some lumber, they want to show you how big their truck is, and that'd be the state, that'd be the state on that one, and there you want.
You've got to understand, there's a reason to use a Jake brake, though, I mean, if you're going, you know, highway speeds, and it's, it helps the brake, it's safer.
Yeah, except they're, you know, they're, they're on them, I live east of town, and they're on them overtime, they just like to hear them pop. It's just, it's just the way it is.
I live right here at Aitland Cedar, and they're popping in Yankton, and there's signs all over the place.
It's not his people, and it's not his people, it's all of them, so, they just do it, so, I don't know why they do it.
I'm so concerned about fuel mileage, that I would just as soon have them all just slow up gradually, but, uh-
They just like to hear it. Well, I would say, let's move forward through 1809, if, if this is something we want to. Number one, I'd say documents are completed satisfactory, um, he's provided special conditions and circumstances which exist to A... To B, the conditions and circumstances are not the actions of the applicant, or because of the applicant, actions of the applicant, you know, I think as Gary stated, we've had problems with RT, and I know we've talked about it, it was kind of a placeholder to was, to see what develops, and then try to figure that out, so. This is actually what the board thought or hoped would happen, was that people would come in more than they have, and rezone individual properties, you know, and kind of start a, a chain of events where you would see something like commercial move on down the highway, you know, as more and more people rezone, but it just hasn't happened that much. Every time, every time you change your zone, you, you gain something, but you give up something, so.
Right, sure.
You know, it doesn't, it doesn't happen as easily as, as was thought that it would.
Okay, number three has been met, notice of public hearing, notice the public hearing's being held, number four has been met, number five, the planning commission shall make findings, filings will be made at the end of- findings, findings will be made at the end of the proceeding. The reasons set forth in the application justify recommendation, it is more logical to be zoned as commercial than for a transitional. The amendment or change will make it possible for reasonable use, it's more in logical for the use that it is, which is a commercial use at the present time. Recommendation to grant the amendment or change in zone will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance, we already addressed that issue, that's a yes. Number D, excuse me, subsection D, recommendation of approval will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare as presented and testified to by the applicant, it's, uh, business that's already in place. Number six, no petition or amendment for change in zone shall be recommended for approval unless the planning commission binds for that conditional situation to be intended use of the property. All right, we are addressing that in this meeting. Number seven, if any amendment or petition to rezone is recommended for approval, the planning commission shall make written findings certifying compliance with the comprehensive plan, specific rules governing, governing land use, zoning district regulations, and that will all be done in the findings of fact.
Should be doing the findings of fact now.
Seventy-six, seventy-seven?
Seventy-six, seventy-seven is, is-
Oh, commercial, yeah.
Then we should probably cite which, um, section and subsection that it says you could have a trucking operation, I think he even wrote that in his application, but we should make sure it's correct, so, you're right, we should be referencing that in this discussion.
Article, Article ten, number twenty-three, truck or equipment terminal, I believe?
Article...
Ten oh seven, number twenty-three.
Okay, so that says it is, it accepted commercial use, so that is article one zero zero seven, number twenty-three, truck and terminal. Truck or equipment terminal.
I think we probably should focus on just documenting seven, all of seven, I think we need to have written, written findings. B and C's probably covered with their Article ten, number twenty-three. You know, one, I would say is, is covered, I know there's concern with the size of lagoon and, and water usage, but for the, the business as it operates today, I think we're, we're-
CUP is separate from this, right?
Right.
And the ingress and egress, that's regulated by the state, and if it wasn't sufficient, that would, that would be-
Yeah, we don't have much say in that.
So that's, that's fine, so number two is fine, number three, off right-of-way parking and loading, clearly that's been covered by his business itself. Number four, I'm assuming he has refuse in service areas on those aerials. Yeah. Okay, so we have that covered, number four, utilities, references to location availability and compatibility.
Strictly regarding the rezone, I think-
Yeah, I think those things have already been taken care of when the business was established, buffering, reference to type, okay, that's not necessary. Signs, if any, have proposed exterior lighting, that's for new construction, it's as it is right now. Acquired yards or other open spaces, the whole thing is an open space, eight's covered. Nine, generalized compatibility with adjacent properties, it's compatible with the businesses around it. Number eight, in recommending approval, any petition for amendment or change in zone, the planning commission may prescribe appropriate conditions or safeguards in conformity with this ordinance. All right, so, number eight, if there's any other conditions you want, put on this rezone, now would be the time to bring them up. Or if we're fine with the way it is, then I would say that we've satisfied the requirements in going through section eighteen oh nine, would you agree?
I believe so. Does that make sense to everybody, we go through a zoning change, and then we'll have to review the CUP?
Correct, the CUP is gonna have to come after the zoning has already changed, if there is any intent to do anything about, any kind of conditions towards the truck wash, that should go at the time of the conditional use permit, not at the time of the rezone.
Right.
The only thing that we do have to do is, somebody has to do written findings from the comprehensive plan on this, that's the one thing that is required of the planning commission that we actually have to do, and that doesn't get done tonight, it gets done by somebody before it goes, before this moves on.
Right.
Did you want to do the comp plan and stuff, or did you want to appoint somebody to do that?
Um, yeah, actually, I meant to bring my comprehensive plan, you know, I don't have-
I, I have it, I guess I have, I have it, I pulled it up online.
Well, I think the whole purpose of having a rural transitional district is to do what we're doing tonight, like we mentioned earlier, once it becomes clear what the use of the property is going to be within that area, then it would be appropriate to rezone it to that type of use.
On the other side of it is like, here's where this is, Marquardt is at, then we try it out, then there's an empty lot, and then there's the, whatever oil company is, right? So like, if the oil company came in and said, we'd like to rezone to commercial, then I would think it would be a responsibility of the planning commission to say, all pieces in between would be, you know, we're gonna not have this piece, that piece, this, because you'd have two boundaries, right? So it's just some way to look at and think of, if that happened, what would you do, right?
That's something we discussed last time.
Yeah, we discussed it last time, at length.
We may, we may need a new district, because strictly speaking, under commercial setbacks, and, like, the gas station probably doesn't, that truck stop probably doesn't meet setbacks.
Or minimum lot requirement, two acres.
Minimum lot requirements and things like that, and that's kind of where it got held up, and I, what I would see is, is we need to work on, on developing our rural transitional, maybe start with this corridor up eighty-one, and maybe the whole thing becomes a new, a new zone, a new district.
Kind of a highway commercial, or, a light commercial that doesn't require-
Right, and it would be a combination of egg-
The big setbacks and all that stuff.
Egg, light industrial, uh, commercial, whatever, and we would have to have lesser setbacks and-
Yeah, because the commercial we have now is not, is not friendly to residences and a, and a lot of different things, it, it really was made for big things, you know, so it's hard to, it's hard to go and put it on somebody that's already there, because it's a, you know, it's a huge change, so. But this is the kind of business that commercial was meant for, you know, things that, that use large lots and big setbacks.
If we look at our comprehensive plan under chapter seven, economy, you know, one of, uh, recommendations, you know, is promoting economic diversification, which this, you know, would be, and supporting developmental activities, um, you know, I think that would be in, in line with, uh, section seven, under economy of our comprehensive plan.
Sounds good.
And, and, you know, specifically, number two, encourage development of projects that take advantage of existing industrial and commercial areas and infrastructure, I mean, this is a, as far as where this is located, it's on a state highway, I mean, that's exactly where it should be, it's not on a county road, it's state infrastructure that's designed to take it, so I'd say in, in conformance with, uh, in our comprehensive plan, um, chapter seven, economy in particular, um, policy recommendation, number two, uh, to encourage development projects that take advantage of existing industrial and commercial areas and infrastructure, so, that should be the requirement for, uh, seven A, I would think.
Yep.
I think we met all the requirements, then.
I believe so, that was the only thing left, and you filled that mic in, so. I would entertain a motion from the board on the rezone, we can't vote on the CUP until the rezone is complete.
So now with the rezone, we're gonna need two readings at, at the board of adjustment, twenty days. I'd move recommendation to rezone the Marquardt properties to commercial as requested, based off the findings of fact.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll call vote whenever you're ready.
Frank?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Flibish?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schol?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, next item on the agenda, Steven Novak and Bernice Hauck, variance in plat, applicants are requesting a variance to decrease the minimum lot size requirement in an ag district on a proposed plat.
Do we have to do the conditional use?
We can't do the conditional use until it's rezoned.
Until approved.
Till, till it goes to the twenty-day process with no-
Till the rural transitional, until it's actually changed, that rural transitional.
Okay, thank you, all right. So applicant is requesting a variance to decrease the minimum lot size requirement in an ag district on a proposed plat from twenty acres to eighteen point five two nine acres for lot one, and eighteen point five zero one for lot two, said property is legally described as the north half of the north half of the north quarter, northeast quarter, excuse me, of section twenty-three, T ninety-four North, range fifty-seven, here and after referred to as Zischov North Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. Is there someone here to speak on this issue? Hi.
Hi. I'm Shima Woodward, I'm, on behalf of Ms. Hauck, and actually, Tom Reynolds represents Mr. Novak, and he's not here, not able to be here tonight, so I'm here on behalf of both applicants.
Okay.
Looks like this is basically, they want to transition to the adjacent landowner to the south, is the end game?
Yeah, there's, there's, uh, Mr. Novak wants to sell his, his half of this, and Ms. Hauck does not wish to sell her half, they're siblings, and to avoid having to go to court and have a partition action, and have one party end up either having to sell when they don't want to, or, um, not sell when they want to, and, and frankly, we wouldn't be here probably if this ground didn't abut three oh six, um, because if it, it's, it would be twenty acres, I think, if we went all the way out to the middle of the road, if they were the forty acres to the south of this, they'd be fine, um, and I think that's, I was talking to Tom Week actually today, and he said, just, I know you were talking about zoning changes, but, he said other counties do actually consider that out to the right of way, when they're considering whether it meets the twenty acres or not, but the, the hardship here is, we've reached an agreement between the siblings, we don't really want to have to go to court and spend a bunch of money fighting about what happens here, um, it'd be costly, it's not very effective, and the county is using the missing three acres, I guess, for its roads, so, um, I don't think there's any issue with any of the neighbors, it's gonna re, remain agricultural.
I'm sure if they were to sell that off today, you would buy out to the middle of the road?
Yes, you would, you'd buy the twenty acres, that's right.
In my question, you're just gonna leave, it's an agricultural land?
Correct, it's not changing, not changing zoning or anything, we just need the, the variance to allow this plat to proceed at less than twenty acres for each of the ten lots.
There's no homesteads or anything on this ground?
No.
I think there will be a lot of, there's a lot of this in the county where, because of the measurement to the pin in the center of the road, you know, we all have complained about, we pay taxes to the federal road, even though we don't have access to it, but ba, you know, this is very obvious, that the land between the road, to the center of the road takes up the, what's being taken off of this for the forty acre amount, and that, that is something, and everybody's, the way the land was plotted or was surveyed to start with, that's all over the county, I think, you have all these things that, depending upon where you measure from, where it comes to, and it's by no, no fault of the owner or applicant at this time, um, that caused that land to be out of there, just because of the way it's, it's measured.
Right. Right.
If we just look through 1807 and the variances and, and what's required, um, I think it's, it's pretty clear. The strict application of ordinance would produce an undue hardship.
Right.
The hardship's not generally shared by properties in the same district or vicinity, and so, you know, anyone not abutting the road is not gonna have this. It's not gonna be detrimental to joining properties of character of the district, in my opinion. It's based on reasons that demonstrate well an exceptional hardship. So I-
Maybe get public comment.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any other comments before I ask for public comment? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? Okay, hearing none, time for public comment is now over. All right. I believe it means the hardship clause for the reasons you've just discussed. Is there anyone else that would like to, um, add any additional comments on this agenda item?
Yeah, if we, if we don't allow this, what's this person supposed to do? It's their land and they're, they're choosing to sell it if we don't allow it.
Yeah.
It's saying somebody can't sell their own property, I guess, so.
Well, and, I mean, they, it, it's the road. I mean, that's been well established. If it wasn't on the road, it would be 20 acres. You know, and they'll get to pay that tax, just like all of us that live next to the township roads get to do. Okay, so does somebody have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the variances, um, on both of these, establish these, both of these lots, um, for the one lot at 18.529 acres and the other one at 18.501 for lot number two. Due to the hardship, uh, fact of the measurement of the right of, off of the road takes the, about an acre and a half basically away from the existing 40 acres that it would normally meet our requirement. By no, no reason that the balance did anything to with that, just the way it was plotted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll call vote whenever you're ready.
Harper?
Yes.
Clevish?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Scholz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes. Okay, motion carried. Oh, yes, we gotta do the plat now. All right. So the first plat, Gladys Kubal plat.
We gotta do the plat.
Oh, no, no, their plat, I'm sorry.
We gotta do the-
The plat for them.
The Novak's plats.
It's just one plat, the two lots are together on one plat.
Right.
Do we have to ask for public comment on the plat?
Probably not. I do have a question on that.
Sure.
If you compare that to Beacon, actually, that could be platted that way.
Did you answer your own question?
Well, maybe. If you look at Beacon, there's the tw- the 40 acres up top that they're looking to split.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's a, an 80 in the center of that quarter.
Mm-hmm.
And then a 40 to the south.
Mm-hmm.
And the plat has a 40, a 40 and a quarter, or an 80. Starting in the to- in the north of the east of that section, there's a 40 that we're looking to split.
Mm-hmm.
And then below that, in this plat, there's another 40 platted, and then there's a 80 platted to the south. If you look at Beacon, it's a 40, an 80, and then a 40.
Depending on the situation, Beacon is not exactly the same as survey.
Right.
Uh, Beacon will have multiple parcels under one parcel number and show two 40s and 80, um, that are under the same ownership.
Oh.
So-
Well, that's why I said, well, that's, I probably answered my own question.
Yeah.
I was gonna just make sure that this was correct.
There may be a separate legal description for the two 40s within the 80, and there may not, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
But Beacon itself is not the same-
Correct.
As, you know, this type of plat work, although these 80s are clearly, 40s are clearly not platted, but, uh, they'll have, even on smaller lots, you will see multiple lots together under one parcel number.
Right.
You know, so you can't, you can't use the Beacon, you know, when, when it comes to comparable to survey, cause it's not the same thing.
Right. I just, well, I caught my eye and I just wanted to make sure that this is what, what we're after, I guess.
Generally, you go by the survey certification, if they have to try and update it.
Right.
Or factor, something like that comes up there.
I'd move approval of the plat as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the plat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll call vote whenever you're ready.
I see what you're saying.
Clevish?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Scholz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
All right. Now. Gladys Kubal plat, the plat of track, the Kubal addition in the northeast quarter of section nine, T-94 North, range 57 West of the 5th PM in Yankton County, South Dakota.
Right.
Is there somebody to speak on that plat? Or we're just? Do we even have?
I don't, no, I don't have anything, do I?
Um, I think it is, it's just on the back.
On the backside of-
The back of something?
On the backside of another.
It's just a plat.
I'm, I'm not gonna be the judge because I dropped my backpack all over my-
This, this right here, right here.
I'm a little mixed up anyway, tonight. You could be anywhere.
Page numbers or something on the bottom, if you could do that.
Oh.
Starts with that.
I did see that, and it's in this mess somewhere.
And then the next page is the-
Oh, okay.
We're not usually gonna have all this that I dropped, so.
I guess I actually have a question, and it's for Gary. We've had a, I don't know, a mixed idea of how to pass some of these plats in the past. We had some where the zoning administrator was signing them and sending them through, and some where they were coming to us, and some where Brian was signing some and, you know, um, I had some concerns with what Brian was doing, signing them, I'm not sure that was legally correct, and, and, uh, you know, I had talked with them about it and thought they should come so that we at least were sure that legally what we were doing with these plats was gonna be okay five or 10 or 15 years down the road.
That's exactly my thought process, too. I've talked to Jessica about this previously, is personally, I feel that's another one of those ordinance changes that should be made. Um, my experience has always been it's better to have one process. I don't like having three processes for one thing. And so my thought process is exactly that also, that everything would run through this commission and Bo- and, and the comi- the county commission and planning commission, and we'd have one process. We always get, everybody's always messing up which title block they're supposed to be putting on them. I like the consistency of having one process, and that's my plan for the future also.
So we'll be seeing, we'll technically be seeing kinda all of them.
Correct.
You know?
Because, yeah, cause you do get into, I don't like making that judgment call either. Well, this is a simple plat, so I can just sign off on it, and, and I know in December, sometimes people are trying to push things through and, and it can hold up the process and, and it forces them to pay their taxes for an entire year if they go into the January meeting and things like that. But for the most part, once people know that that's the process you're gonna use, they plan accordingly, and, and it just seems better to have one process, to me, so.
Okay. As long as, I think as long as all the survey guys kinda know that now, and I'm sure they're gonna find it out.
Yeah, we'd send out letters ahead of time and things like that when that time comes.
We had had when we did the subdivision ordinance, part of the, part of the intent or the trade-off with the subdivision ordinance was to shorten the process for guys on some of the plats, but in the long run, I think that got carried away and drug out onto some other things that wasn't supposed to be part of it, so.
But I think that's the issue, is that we always get calls literally on just about every plat, every, well, we gotta change this title block or that title block because of this process.
Okay. I think as long as everybody knows that's what we're gonna do. I mean, it worked before, I don't see why it wouldn't work now, but it just seemed like it got pretty convoluted to where nobody knew what they were supposed to do half the time.
We'll definitely give a lot of communication on that when that comes.
Thank you.
Do you have any concerns about the Kubal plat?
No idea, Doc. I can kinda fill you in a little bit on what the plat is.
Sure.
Gladys turned 83 last Sunday. And her husband passed away a couple of years ago, and she has three, three daughters and a son, and several of them are, all the, two of them are involved in farming operations around there, but what she's trying to do is this is estate planning, and she's trying to get it plotted out, so when that, when she passes, the land is already transferred, they're giving up the land amongst the children. And she just wanted to get this in order because the daughter that this will eventually go to owns and farms land all around it.
All around it.
And because of the way the family previously owned the land, her husband, Mike, um, bought a lot, owned a lot of land in that area, and then with the son-in-law and the son, they all own land around it, and she's just in the process of trying to get this divvied up in a legal manner, so that when something happens to her, it's all done.
All taken care of.
State issue.
Right.
So that's what it is, and it's about 40, 30 acres.
So it doesn't fall under that under 20 problem, so.
No variance.
Sure. Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions on this plat? Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve this plat, and Gladys Kubal.
All right.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll call vote whenever you're ready.
Yes.
Scholz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Clevish?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda, the Thomas Luther plat. And that is a plat of lot 26 in the Lewis and Clark Business Center located in the south, 645 feet, except for lot H2 of the north half of the northeast quarter in section 16, T-93 North, range 56 West to the 5th PM in Yankton County, South Dakota. Doesn't say what township.
Utica South, probably was Utica South.
Utica South.
Utica South.
This would be right along Highway 52.
Do you have any concerns with this plat?
No idea, Doc.
Better one acre minimum, I think.
Commercial, yes. Have a commercial. Or, excuse me, lake area commercial.
Lakeside commercial. You have access?
I'm guessing this plat has been laid out, oh, since the late 90s, I'm gonna say. Tom Luther developed that property there, um, in kinda the way it works. If you don't know, if you haven't developed property, is you don't, you don't plat all the lots right away, or you have to pay taxes on them as a lot right away. So you lay out your lots, and then as you're going to do something with the lots-
Sell or develop it.
Whether you're gonna sell them or, or develop them, then you do your plats and pull them in. So, you know, I'm guessing this lot has been sitting there for a while, it's just that now something's gonna happen with it, and so it needs to be platted.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve this plat, unless I have another question.
I was just gonna give you some more information for that.
Oh, we'll, we'll take it. Sure.
I was just gonna say, he's right, it wa- it has been there for a while. It was just the leftover pieces, and it was connected to that road, um, to the west, and so he's separating that lot from that road and made that road public. So, that's all that is.
I'll second that one.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We'll call vote whenever you're ready.
Scholz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Clevish?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda, possible recommendation of the Yankton County zoning ordinance 2020 adoption as per ordinance.
When were the administrative, administrative items, when were they coming in?
They were coming before that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at the latest one here. Administrative items, sorry.
This, I got the old one.
Oh, you got the old one.
It was actually, this is next, and the administrative items are afterwards.
Sorry, okay.
So are we going to go with zoning?
Do we have to tell her that?
Sorry.
He taught me how to read somewhere, I don't know where it was. All right, so-
We could do the admin items, get these guys out of here sooner, if we wanna do that.
Would you prefer that?
Good idea.
All righty, we will stick with the administrative items, Doug Zimmerer.
Oh, I was confusing. Discussion of zoning ordinance changes with.
Hi, Leslie Kuhn, Kuhn, Lewis and Clark Realty, on behalf of, behalf of Doug Zimmer, he is now a Yankton resident, he does live here, he's been working at this Spencer Dam for twenty-six years and he's gonna be retiring, what's left of it. So, in the meantime, he's done a lot of investing in the Yankton area, four spec homes, three fix and rentals and a four flex. He, if you look now that you have this, after you read the front page, he called me last night and I asked if I could help him with this and I said absolutely, so please bear with us cuz just trying to make it as simple and easy and quick as possible. If you see on the Nottingham Drive, that is like its own little island of property, he has over the years, starting in twenty-fifteen, purchasing the pieces to try to make a development out of it, it was started years ago and it sat there because of the topography, because it's just, I mean, a person would love to go on there and build a house in every lot, but it's not gonna happen because of all the treacherous driveways and the wat, the water issues and I guess to bring in dirt to try to build on it. So, years ago, we came up with a plan and if you go to the very right, lot six, he built his first spec home there. And we had to do it on the top of the lot because there's only way you could get in is go all the way around to the back and then at least get a driveway that was accessible. So he did that one and you can see there what it sold for. Then he split the next lot off, he had to go with seven and fourteen to put it together because fourteen was basically useless, so he just added it to seven and then put the house in the middle where it was the best, most level part to build the house. And then you can see what he sold that one for, three fifty, something, four, I believe. So then later, he went on to buy eight, nine, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, which is that little island that's out there on its own. So even though it was a long-term plan and all your faces have changed and the zoning guy has changed, everything we know has changed. So here we go, we stay out of politics. We're just going back to say what makes sense is for lot eight to be with part of lot nine and build a house there and then nine and ten in the corner there, you can see part of the house we're trying to do. And then because of the topography of eleven, twelve, and thirteen, it's just, it's kind of a wasted, I hate to say land is wasted space, but there's no way to really build on any of it, so he was going to try to put it between twelve and thirteen right there so you can at least access the property and that would complete this development. So that is basically however we should approach you and do this correctly, we would like to do that. And then this would be finished and that would add three more houses, either three fifty to four hundred thousand, and open up some more lots cuz we know we need lots in this area and we need more lake houses. So that's basically it in a nutshell.
So you're planning on replating these lots together, is that the plan?
Didn't know if we needed a variance, you know, if that would be possible, what, whatever you guys come up with as far as, you know, we're willing to, to just do the steps the right way, but we didn't really have to do that the first time, so didn't know about this one.
Lots are already undersized to start with and so this is actually an improvement by combining them and making them at least getting closer to what they're supposed to keep for the ordinance and so that's, that's, that's his goal and that's, that's one of the things that's probably helpful in this case is that at least we're, we're trying to upsize a little bit versus downsize for something that's already existing and already undersized.
The home on eight and then the nine and ten are all of them, I should say. With the topography and the terrain, can you meet the right-of-way setbacks, do you know, is that the proposal? Or are you just more looking at, do you have to replat these and?
Well, they'd have to be made lots of record in order for them to get financing, I mean, you'd have to replat it, but we're trying to figure out the best way to replat it.
Right.
Is what I'm getting from you, right?
Yes, exactly.
And if it came in as a P U D, right, would this essentially be a?
Needs to be a minimum of five acres, I don't know how much all this would be together.
Yeah, support point something for the remaining lots that you bought.
But if the whole thing was put in as a P U D, if the whole development, that would be five acres, not?
Yes. If you included fourteen, seven, and six.
Is this R-one?
I don't know if that's the best way of just drawing.
This R-one, R-one, five acre? That's, that's the only real problem is that it's R-one, but you know, I mean, the intent of what it's doing is bringing it closer, not farther away.
Right.
So, you know, as a general rule, at least in the years I was on here, when, when people did things, if they, if they made a way to try and get closer to the requirements instead of farther away, it was something we pretty much, I mean, you can never say a hundred percent this is gonna get approved cuz there can be other problems, but that's, that's one of the things that we always kind of, as a, as a board stood behind was as long as you're making an attempt to get closer to the, to the requirements instead of farther away, you know, that we always thought it was a good idea.
Well, I think we have some proposed verbiage regarding this and essentially as long as you're not furthering your non-conformance.
And nothing here is small enough, you know, she's putting them together, so she wouldn't be giving up anything, sometimes when you are replating lots of record, even you can put two of them together and you can still be under the state numbers and you can give up your grandfather on the lots cuz we've had that before where people put two lots together and ended up losing their grandfather to have a septic system on the property cuz the two together were too small, once you put them together. But we don't have that here, I don't, I don't foresee anything in this that she would lose anything by losing these, I'm guessing pre-nineteen seventy-five lots.
And it looks like everything would have access, you know, we don't have any access issues.
Right, the, it's just a little island and the road goes completely, it's just like its own cul-de-sac within, you know, the road.
Are you just looking for?
Just looking for some guidance if, if, if they went through this process that they, that most people, that we would look, we looked at favorably, basically.
And B-Y Waters, I was like, it said on the notes, has already been out there and then, you know, he had to make sure that we had enough water for that and the big enough pipeline so that we didn't have the pressure for, for three, two, so.
You know, without doing this, there's not a lot you can do with those lots, you know, it's better to have a house on them and have them do something, so, I guess I would be in support of that, I mean, these were, when did you say these were plotted? Like, well before zoning, correct?
I don't recall, I've got through the data, when they were plotted.
Nineteen sixties or seventies, yeah.
Do you have any idea how close these houses would be to the road?
Well, we're gonna go with thirty-five feet, but it, you know, if we have to do a little bit further, you know, we always go with the setback because let's face it, the closer you are, the less concrete to the, to the drive, you save money there, but sometimes the topography kinda dictates if you have to go a little, you have to get up there and then curve it around to get it a flat area.
I just didn't, I, you know, I just didn't want them to end up right on the road or depending it's, it's bad.
We're gonna try to go up and capture the view, at least on eight and nine and ten, there's a view, on eleven, twelve, and thirteen, you're not gonna get any view because it's on the downside of the hill. So if you put it between twelve and thirteen, you might hit a little bit of a peak and then try to go with that.
Gary, what's your opinion on, on this, I mean?
Well, it's like I said, I think it's actually bettering the area and it's still, at least it still allows some use of the property, so I think, I think it makes sense at this point with the lots that are available there.
Could you drive out there and look at it, which I haven't done, but do you, could there possibly be an issue with neighbors by doing this? I mean, view and access and road and snow and, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to see what kinda hurdles they may face.
Well, I'm sure, yeah, when the time comes that it's plotted, people will come in if they, if there's, if they feel there's a concern, but, but personally, I think it'd be okay anyways.
One of the benefits long-term would be on these properties, it's like the county given no cost to plot, like seven and fourteen, that house is right on the property line. So, the ultimate benefit to the county would be is if these like staggered lots that are joined together and the house is on one-third of it and all that, is if the county would go back in and plot those lots at like no cost to clean up the thing, cuz then you'd end up with the lots that are combined here where they'd all end up being same-sized lots right in that area instead of, here's two lots and the house was four feet on this side of the lot and whatever, fifty-five feet on the other side, I don't know if you could do that.
I don't think you can be asking the county to pay for somebody else's plotting. Plus, you're telling people what to do with their land, but they can ask us if it's okay, but we can't tell them what to do with it. I don't think the, the county has extra money to spare to do that. We're gonna give you two, two more feet here and we're gonna take three feet from that guy. It's a nice thought, but I don't think it's, it's really viable, especially. I understand, you don't want it to cost them any money and then find out it's a no-go, but.
I'm just saying the benefit would be the county combining them, you know, from two lots that's got a house across that line, two lots into one lot, would benefit us.
Those things just have to be varianced and with that one, you know, the house is there prior to someone buying that lot, so they're not, they're not encroaching on a neighbor, whoever buys that house is gonna say, oh, he's on my property, so it's already, you know, it's already solved. It's not like you're gonna, you wanna build there and someone already lives there.
What they're asking you to do though is, is combine lots, you're not asking to build houses over lot lines, you're saying, we'd like to combine lots and a lot with a part of a lot.
I guess we were, we were talking about seven and fourteen, it's already built.
It's already built.
Yeah, and remember being again is not to survey grade or anything, sometimes those lines are a little bit off when we're.
Wouldn't actually be a lot better to do the replot because, you know, as far as neighbors complaining about whatever's out there or gonna be built there, right now it's already plotted to where they could technically build on the lots that are there so they would be, should be fully aware of the fact that that can be done right now. We're trying to make this.
This is actually better for them, they'll have more space between.
Can be less houses.
Exactly, that's why, I was trying to figure out if we'd have to give variances for setbacks because if you have to give variance, now you have to have the public coming in, you know, if it's just a building permit after it's plotted, yeah, sure, it's not a.
But I think basically what you're after is just if there's a possibility, if we can replot these lots back to this size, get away from this, the variance stuff would come later when they went there and get a building permit.
I would just think as long as you're moving towards compliance, as long as everything's getting closer to compliance, you know, we should view that as a plus, you know, anytime anything gets closer to complying with the ordinance, you know, we should be, we should be willing to accept that.
Okay, well, can't make promises up here, I guess, where we can give opinions on, in my personal opinion, I think you're moving in the right direction.
I would say it makes, common sense, common sense would say that. That's the right direction to go.
Okay, and Pickles.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, I'm sorry.
From?
From you guys, any other questions?
Okay.
Let's see, Mr. Pickles here, I can just tell you quickly what, what he was looking at, he lives on his parents' quarter, farm quarter, he lives in the house there, he actually wants to build a new house and plat out five acres on the quarter using the existing driveway and things, he just had concerns, again, that people were telling him that maybe it's an egg, maybe it wouldn't be approved cuz it's under the twenty acres and so he just wanted some discussion again on, on, since it was only five acres he was looking at, which I know through the years, the banks have, have moved that issue forward a lot too because they're not wanting to, they don't want the whole quarter, they want just where the house building's at and, and so that's the, that's his issue that on, on, that he wanted to discuss tonight.
So he wants to?
Do five acres.
Five acres and he would purchase the five acres from his parents and?
He wasn't ready to purchase the entire quarter anyway.
Well, the, the bank hardship has been used quite a bit for that and it's, it is a family member on the family farm.
So he's currently living there?
Correct.
Do you know what the plans are for the other?
I can give you a bit more insight on it too.
Sure.
Kyle lives in the, the building site, the original farmstead that's there and then there's a, they have a truck shop there that the parents own all the land, there's a feedlot there just inside Yankton County, Bonn County. He wants to build a new house, the parents own the land, I had a conversation with him at his grandmother's, did his birthday party last night, so I had, got a little bit more insight on, but what he's, his other comment to me was what he would probably do was go to the parents and contract for deed twenty acres and just buy the twenty acres just so we would fit the, the thing because he's part of the dairy, part of the family farm anyway, gonna be, at some point, a lot of it's gonna be his anyway, but in order to get this house thing done, which brings up, the only other issue is the financing thing, at some point, when the financier will only take two acres or three acres, whatever, for financing it, then it becomes another issue.
Maybe that's why he isn't here today, cuz it was just yesterday that he stopped in, so we were assuming he was gonna be here.
Well, and that, yeah, I had a conversation with him about that, but, but anyway, that's, that's the, just of what's going on and, but he's thinking now that he'd be better off just to go ahead and contract for deed land from his parents, buy the twenty acres and do it that way, but then you, like I said, it's still the sticker.
Still gonna have to plat two acres to get, there just is no way around that finance.
No way around it, so, you know, either way. I'm not sure, and this is, it's happened before, and I'm not sure what the legal ramifications, but back when we were on the board, a long time ago, a gentleman came in and asked for a variance or whatever to sell off of an existing farmstead to somebody that wanted to buy it, it was like fourteen acres, and I know the place, it was a farmstead, they had buildings and stuff, but it all been kinda taken down. We approved it, the gentleman went and sold just part of the farmstead to the guy that wanted to buy it and did some type of a quick claim deed or something to the rest of the property and redeveloped another piece on that and sold that property as a separate piece off of something that was already included in the farmstead exemption. And I'm wondering how that? And I'm wondering how that plays out.
I think you'd have, you wonder if it went through bank financing or if they just paid it or how they transfer it.
Well, the gentleman that bought the, the building site did not want to buy the, couldn't afford to buy the whole thing. But we still approved it as a, you know, the variance as a farmstead, it was less than twenty acres. So we approved that within thought that that's what he was selling. Didn't know afterwards he quit playing deed, parted it off and sold that separately to somebody else.
Part of that variance on the homestead exemption.
But once you have had to replot it, and, and that's where if you have a fourteen-acre thing as a variance, you're going to sell part of it, then you're replotting part of that and then you'd need the variance for that too.
No, but it never came back in.
Well, but I mean, that's the...
He might have gotten by with just a legal description.
Yeah.
Meets and bounds description, they generally take those here. Anything twenty, under twenty acres is supposed to be platted. But it's, it's not like, you know, we had a guy that did a whole development out by the lake and a former planning commission member that didn't want to have to come into the planning commission.
You did the best you can.
He did all his lots by meets and bounds, so he didn't have to come into the planning commission.
You know, things like that will happen.
I'm not sure how we, you know, we have to look, I guess, as we're moving forward on changes and things in the, in the ordinance. We have to look at it, how we're going to address some of this stuff. Because it's, the, the two-acre thing off of the twenty-acre thing in order to finance, to build a house is going to be, is a really sticker for a lot of...
I think we have to maybe start looking at these restrictions on those or something.
Or just, or just a smaller number, you know, like Turner County and Bonhom County. And every county around us has the two-and-a-half acre rule. If that's what the banks are requiring, it's two-and-a-half acres, no bigger, no, or you know, it can go bigger if they can afford it, but smaller, then that takes that all out. If they're going to do a variance for that, then it's separate pieces, it's not twenty acres and then subdivided. I think the cleanest thing for everybody, to tell you the truth.
Well, let's get back to what we were... Okay. Possible recommendation of the Yankton County zoning ordinance 2020 adoption per ordinance 2001.
So basically, hopefully you all got my emails this past week. But as you probably have heard, there was a temporary emergency zoning ordinance that was approved at the end of last year. And, and so this is the first step now in moving forward on doing final adoption and trying to move forward on, on moving this ordinance, new ordinance ahead with no changes from the last ordinance. Ordinance sixteen, that, that there was a concern about the, about addressing legal challenges of the validity of the ordinance from, from 2006. And so it was decided that the county would move forward on adopting an emergency zoning. And now we're looking to move forward on going through the regular process and adopting that, that ordinance again, so.
So to adopt this ordinance, which we have, we have with the...
Correct.
All the stuff taken off. We're going to, what we're going to do is have a vote as a planning commission and go to a, a public meeting and then move forward.
Then we go to the, yeah, first reading, second reading, county commission, and twenty days to adopt.
And then at that point, the emergency ordinance, which is what this technically is, becomes the permanent ordinance.
Correct.
So can we make that recommendation tonight or do we have to push this off a month? Okay, we can make it tonight. All right.
Is what we would do technically, if, if we do anything, we would recommend to have a public hearing? Is that, is that what we're talking about? We're talking about having a public hearing as the planning commission moving this to a public hearing?
Isn't it's a public, it's the hearing.
So this was noticed as a public hearing?
Yeah, no, it's already been noticed. And so you're just making a recommendation to the county commission.
Okay.
And it's just adopting the existing ordinance that we've always had again. So there are no changes in this ordinance, it's the one we had before. I just want to make that crystal clear to anyone that might be in the audience or watch this recording later. This is the exact same ordinance that we had prior. And we're just going to make it the law of the land again.
But it's, it's the ordinance that we are currently using.
Correct.
After the 2006.
After all the changes.
All the updates and everything are up to current.
Right. What we, what, what we asked Gary to do is take out all the affidavits, the notice of adoptions, all the revisions. So if we were to adopt this, it would be like this was, somebody sat down and typed this brand-new.
Right.
But it's word for word what we, what we have. And we did talk about some of these changes that we know we need and we know are coming and that we've worked on. We did talk about, you know, it's now the time to just, to do that, we're making a change. But the general consensus and input from this commission, obviously it's, it's warranted. But the general consensus was why muddy the, you know...
Muddy the waters.
Let's just start over from scratch and then we can move forward.
I agree, I don't think I would make changes until this becomes the permanent ordinance again.
Right.
And then...
Otherwise, it's just, it's like you're trying to sneak something in or something.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. And then there was also discussion, do we, you know, do we limit it to Article Five? Do we limit it to anything that was changed in '06? And other counties have done similar things and they've just re-adopted the entire ordinance. Because ten years from now, someone could challenge a change made in '09. And so at least this resets the clock to this period in time.
There's been some things that were questioned when it was put in.
So we just do the whole thing as it sits right now?
That was the, the thought process. Because believe me, there's things in here that I don't, there's things in here I don't like at all, there's things I would like to change, there's things I'd like to throw out. But the thought was, we got to this point through the proper channels. So this is where we'll start and...
And then we'll go back and do our, our accessory structures after this has been adopted. Because we worked on that and had that pretty much all figured out. But we'll have to wait till this is all readopted before we can do any of this.
And then with Mr. Markwart, we'll need to wait until this is through and then we can put his change through and maybe we do more changes at that time.
Okay, that being said, is there any people in the audience that would like to speak about this proposed re-adoption of the existing ordinance?
Yes, if you want to speak at the very beginning, okay.
Okay. All right, hearing none. Time for public input on this agenda item is now closed. Do we have a motion from the board or any additional discussion? Same book we've been using.
Should we go through 1809 again with this one like we did for the other rezone?
Sure. Well, it's not really a rezone, it's a re-adoption of the ordinance.
Yeah, I don't know what you're...
Would it be, would it be, would we need to go through that?
No. No, we just, this is...
This is re-adopting the book that...
Because I don't know whether to use this 1809 or... Oh, that's right, it's the same thing.
I'm guessing we just got to have, we got to have a motion to accept this.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Any other questions?
I'm going to try and formulate a motion.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to recommend acceptance of the temporary emergency ordinance in its entirety as the permanent Yankton County zoning ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion.
Everybody think that motion is okay? I don't quite know how else to do it.
I guess I got a couple of questions. Why did you take out like all the, where, and all the, up the right-hand corners when everything was amended and stuff up in there and all, and the zoning ordinances and stuff like that? Why was that taken out?
It's basically all those affidavits and everything were taken out and all this. So this is basically all, all like, like they had said, it's basically a fresh copy of, of the entire ordinance.
It's like we're starting new, you know what I mean? Any, all that stuff would have applied to a change to something that was pre-existing. And this, I think, is like we're starting new with it, like if we just accepted it.
Right.
And all those, up in those corners, most of them had dates and stuff like that. Now we're starting out.
Yeah, nothing could predate now.
So any revision going forward would be noted.
A revision to this.
And hopefully we'll do it consistently because it was done different ways.
And it was done different ways, that's it. We, like you said before, consistency is the key, figuring out a system and sticking to it throughout the years.
Well, and I don't know, you know, I don't know how it'll happen in the future. But, you know, we've had somewhere we had strike-through shown and somewhere we didn't continue the strike-through, you know, in the next ordinance. I'm not sure, we'll have to talk about that, how we're going to, how we're going to do that. It seems to me it's nice to show the strike-through when you make the changes. But, you know, afterwards, I don't know how long you can continue to show all the struck-through stuff without making your ordinance a mess.
Yeah.
I like to see it when, when it would be republished.
When the change is first made.
Right, and then when it be republished, I just like to see a notation in like the right-hand column, Rev. A, Rev. B, or the date, or you know, whatever. So you know which paragraph was changed at least.
Right.
But that's kind of up to...
It's adding the notice and everything too, so.
So I applaud what was done. It's what we talked about, I cleaned up, did you actually find stuff and what page and everything was. And I have to ask the question because I was still down at Mexico border. I never understood how something that was adopted in 2006 was an emergency fourteen years later. So that was my only question about this was how did it become an emergency if it had been there for fourteen years? If the barn has been burning for four days, you don't have to run lights and sirens to fire anymore, right?
No, but if your barn's been standing for fourteen years and someone throws a match to it, now you have an emergency.
It's different. I, I guess I got lost and maybe, and it might be, I'm not trying to start a war. But I've had innumerable people ask me, and I said, I don't know the answer. Like how did something that was there for fourteen years become an emergency? And, you know, the public perception, like when I was in nuclear weapons, public perception, that's what actually happened, right? So I'm trying to, I, I think this is absolutely what we had to do. We talked about it and then we never could get it, like how do we get the pages all retyped or whatever? So as this goes forward, if you could re, just reiterate like how you guys had the two-day emergency, right? When it goes through the, this is going to go to the county commission and all that. So just to calm the storms, right? How did something that was fourteen years old become an emergency? And I, I didn't, I, you know, and obviously I wasn't here, so I'm not trying to stir up something, but that was a question that's been asked to me innumerable times.
I think I'll speak to it. You know, and I think there's a difference between what you know and what those guys know, and I know some of it. The emergency isn't anything that happened in 2006 except that there may have been not a correct publication procedure going on.
Right, I followed that.
So the emergency is, if, if this is challenged and fails, what part of this ordinance fails? Does everything from then on fail? Everything...
All the different changes.
Everything that's been done since that can fail. It, it's not a, it's not a clearly laid-out process as far as what can fail, what can't fail, and, and where we go from here. So the real emergency is the fact that there's a discrepancy. And that discrepancy is what, as far as, for me, the emergency is, is that do you take a chance on technically almost the whole ordinance being thrown out? Or, or do you technically say, we're going to create temporary emergency zoning? And, and the emergency tag, I don't know that the emergency tag really had to be there, it could have just been temporary.
That's my really main point. Because I applaud what the efforts was put in this, right?
Yeah.
And I think if it hadn't been deemed an emergency, the, this whole board would have looked at it, would have been looked at as a higher, more professional administrative organization. That's my whole key point in this. Because I agree with everything that was done with this year. It's just a pathway looking as we go forward, how do we define it? If everything's an emergency, then what is an emergency?
But I think the emergency language actually comes from codified law. That's, that's part of where it talks about temporary and it talks about emergency. And I think just to, in order to align what they're doing with codified law, they tried to use as much of the verbiage from codified law as they could.
I completely understand that. So I'm just saying as this goes forward, it would be to our benefit to have just an article in the paper, how did this go from here to here? Just, just, it only has to be like a paragraph, right? Here's what the intent was, right?
Yeah.
And I think that comes out, the investment in the next years is huge on it. Again, when I did nuclear weapons, public perception, if they pursued a nuclear accident, it was a nuclear accident.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to, I actually, this is what we needed to do a long, long time ago.
I just think because there was, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't something you wanted to make common knowledge that you might have a, a publication problem in your zoning ordinance. So that's part of why it was kind of limited on, you know, they didn't just run out in public and say, whoa, we might have a publication problem in our zoning ordinance. And then everybody would be running around, you know, doing whatever they want to do, whether they think it's positive or negative. They just said, let's just clean this up, let's go temporary with an emergency.
That's how it came out in the press.
Yeah, and that's, you know, some of that, you don't necessarily get to control all yourself, you know?
I get that.
The newspaper controls some of that, so.
Step up a level of professionalism as we do the administrators.
Speaking of professionalism, we have a motion on the board. Do we have a second? We need a vote unless there's any other...
Who is the motion? John has the motion, who is the second?
John gave the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Rule call vote when you're ready.
Williams?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Welch?
No.
Frank?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Clivich?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes. Okay, motion carried. And now it is the time for a discussion of zoning ordinance changes. Anything else additional to that discussion for now? I think we all understand this has to be all finalized before we can make any additional zoning changes. Is that just regarding...
Every time.
Okay, all right, I just, I, I'd assume that's what it was?
Yeah.
Just making sure here. Okay, and so now...
Sorry, I, on, on that, I, I would say that we don't just, we don't stop thinking about changes and what we want to do.
No.
We certainly want to hit the ground running when, when this is done.
I did turn, I did take apart the ordinance that we talked about changing Section Two and Section Sixteen, I think it was, and gave Gary the copy of the changes that we had agreed upon so that he could review them. Like, I mean, I realize we're not doing them now, but he's had them and he's had time to look at them, so.
And we've, we've reviewed Article Twenty-Five several times, there's...
It's a beast.
So we have... It's a beast.
The company that does our consulting today regarding Article Twenty-Five, and when I say they do our consulting, they do the consulting of the, for the applicants on behalf of the county or maybe for the county on behalf of the applicants, however it works. They, they've seen the same ordinance written in this region and have issues with it. And so they've been on their dime. And so they've been on their dime essentially making recommendations to update it and change it. So we've met with them a couple of times and hopefully we have some sort of revision that we can present here as well, so.
Thanks.
And that's primarily language and things like that?
Yeah, there's just so much in there that doesn't apply to the majority of what we deal with.
What we're doing, yeah. Okay. Yep.
We have to get more general.
Okay, so public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Frank Kolchak, 22-year retired legislator, five miles west of Yankton County line. I see your picture up there, your statue called the thinker. And I just want to compliment each and every one of you in your deliberations. You've been very thoughtful tonight and it seems like throughout your zoning meetings and thinking the issues too, as well as your secretary and director, you're doing a fantastic job. Your thoughtful concern for the long-term best interest, the health and safety, and the common sense of economic development and positive solutions to difficult challenges you face in Yankton County. And I commend you for that. Prevention, you have a handout in front of you about an ongoing virus that was found and in the swine industry. And they, they're saying it's mutating, so, well, it just, it really explains it. You go to the back page, it gives an excellent example as well. And that's just one thing that's happening in our industry today. And it's happening, seems like weekly, I get different types of those kinds of things for health and safety issues. I would encourage this body to have the Yankton chapter of the Sierra Club present, give a presentation on their efforts to take water samples in Yankton County. This has been a very similar and effective tool that happened on the Big Sioux River over the last, I believe, 10 years, which led to the reduction of both sourced and non-point source pollution on the river. It has been a very successful program on the Sioux River. But I would ask that you consider that in your deliberations to have them give a presentation. Also, in Bonham County right now, we're having a tremendous problem. We're having application of manure on top of the snow. You know that runs off and it runs into our streams, into our rivers and into our lakes, and it's been a huge issue this winter. We've had miles and miles of county roads destroyed this fall and winter by liquid manure tankers. And the manure was spilled on county roads because they didn't even keep the lids shut. Again, some real huge issues faced in Bonham County. Thank you again for your time and good luck in your decisions and deliberations in 2020. I am one neighbor who has faith in your decision-making progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else on the list? No? All right.
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make one comment before we adjourn, if I could, just for a second.
Okay.
And it's directed to Gary and Jessica there. When you send out these packets, can you do a page break between one applicant and the next so that it's not one on the back and on the front of the other? Because you get really confused sometimes.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I'm looking at if you have page numbers too. I'll try to, we'll try to.
It's hard to keep track of it, especially if you're one single, I would be trying to sign the page.
Trying to conserve.
I know, I like to save paper, but I agree, it was a little confusing.
I don't like saving it that much.
I don't know if we can learn or not.
Okay, we had a motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I thought he was going to second. He said something else. Somebody else second it.
Second.
Second.
Seconded.
I have three steps paper.